Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The time is 6:03 PM and I'd like to ask everyone to rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, because this is a work session tonight, there is no public comment, but we do have two public hearings will be able to open this up to public comment. So we'll begin with two board presentations. The first is from Chick Worries, who has a Lake Agawam dredging study update. Kat, if you can let Chick in, that would be a big help. Thank you very much.
Hi Chick, you're in. Here Chick, you have to unmute. Hello?
Do we have sound?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Good evening, everyone. I will be as quick as I can to present the dredging assessment report. That was a grant from New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. I did present this to the board last fall. And so we've completed a few additional tasks since then. This will provide an update and it also allows us to fulfill the responsibility under the grant the village received from the DEC. So you may recall that we prepared a background study that was basically a screening report in 2019 to start looking at dredging opportunities for Lake Agawam. And that was a screening report. It did not have a DEC approved work plan, but we were able to characterize the sediments using sampling and analysis and also define the quantity of material at the north end of the lake, just north of the bend in Pond Lane. And we looked at dredging options at that time. We looked at four basic components of dredging that involve removal of the material, de-watering of the material, loading and transport and disposal. Through the sampling and analysis, we determined that there was silt in the material. We quantified the material at the north end of the lake based on the location that I mentioned before. We looked at de-watering because typically de-watering is done based on land availability. And we looked at transport and disposal and projected some preliminary costs. Recommendations from that report were to proceed to seek the grant, obtain a DEC work plan for further testing, quantify the sediments in the entire lake, further examine dredging options. And also, most importantly, in this graphic shows improvements to the lake that are taking place on a continuous basis. As you know, you've read about, and there's a lot of exciting things happening with the village and the Lake Agawam Conservancy to further protect Lake Agawam. So this, this report that we're talking about this evening, as I said, was based on a grant. It involved the entire lake. Back in November, I did present the fact that we had a DEC approved work plan, that we completed sampling and analysis. We also met with DEC to go over that sampling report. And we received the letter from DEC reviewing that report. We defined the quantity of sediments in the entire lake. We further researched dredging options and we prepared a preliminary report. The sampling and analysis involved 14 locations. Those are shown in green on this map of the lake. The original sampling locations are shown in red from the screening study in 2019. And then the sampling that was done in 2021 that are incorporated into this current report are shown in green. We did confirm that there's fine material, silty material throughout the lake, that the sediments contain some arsenic, lead, some pesticides and some semi-volatile organic compounds. That's not surprising with a lake that receives a lot of runoff from roads. All of those materials are basically originating from, from that type of source. But there were no herbicides, PCBs or volatile organic compounds. The DEC reviewed this material and based on the analysis, they felt that the material would most likely require off-island disposal if it were dredged, loaded and removed from the lake to a disposal location. The current report goes into quite a lot more detail and analyzes hydraulic dredging with upland de-watering, looking at limited areas, primarily the trustees parking lot at the south end of the lake. You may recall, I talked about that when I presented in November. We also looked at a potential hydraulic dredging, but using a filter press with de-watering on a barge that basically saves that upland de-watering need. It takes a little longer and you would use a smaller dredge and have it take place continuously over a longer period of time. And in the most current report, we also looked at mechanical dredging with barge de-watering. And we found that using an environmental sealed bucket on an excavator to remove material, it's kind of an old technology, but we're applying newer technologies in terms of the type of bucket. And it doesn't have a lot of the impacts that mechanical dredging had in the past. That seems like a viable option and it also potentially can reduce the cost based on the lesser handling of materials. So for each of these dredging options, we evaluated them in detail. We determined a range of costs. We assessed on a preliminary basis, the environmental impacts of each option. We reviewed the permitting requirements. And ultimately, if the village goes forward at some point in the future, after securing more funding and more information, a bid process would determine the real cost of such a project. So to date, we've completed the sampling and analysis. We've evaluated the soundings and volume of material in the lake, which is over 300,000 cubic yards. If all of the soft sediment material were removed, we've looked at the dredging options. We also had a meeting with DEC to go over the preliminary report for the purpose of the grant to ensure that they were satisfied with the report. They had a couple of recommendations that were incorporating into the document at this time. And one of the final points is to present this again to the village board so that you are fully aware of the findings and what's been taking place with respect to this grant. So the next steps would be to finalize the report based on the DEC comments and any further input we receive, to define a dredging project, to engage in a bidding process, to secure funding for the project, to secure any access authorizations that may be needed, such as town trustees, to obtain permits and complete environmental reviews under SEACER, to contract the services and perform the dredging. And all throughout this effort, it's very important to complete the multitude of lake improvement projects that are taking place that, as I said, you're very much aware of, just in terms of bioswales, lily pad removal and, and all of the drainage improvements that are taking place, as well as exploring potential sewerin and, and looking at groundwater flow and other PRB methods and things that are just constantly ongoing based on the interest and need and desire to protect Lake Agawam and improve Lake Agawam. So that concludes a brief update of where we are now and how we've gotten here. And I really appreciate the opportunity to present this to you tonight. The mayor asked that I keep it brief, but I did want to mention that this is a New York State grant from DEC. And the contract is shown on this image. And again, I appreciate your time. Jesse, please let me know if you'd like me to cover anything else.
Thank you very much, Chick. That was a great presentation. I would just like to turn to members of the board to see if anyone had any questions or comments regarding the presentation.
Just had one question, Chick. Board meeting two weeks ago, Kevin McAllister, a member of the public and a former mechanic, daykeeper, water quality person of great interest, expressed that some of the efforts that we've made, peroxide treatment, et cetera, have been, not sure if you used the exact word, but in my mind, it's like a Band-Aid on a pretty bad problem. It makes the thing look better, but it doesn't really solve the problem. Now, we really should be focusing our attention and funds on removing the solids from the lake, which is what you're talking about here with the dredging. How would you respond to that? And you agree? Do you think it's worthwhile keeping up the, it seems like you, it sounds like you do agree with it, even though it's expensive and it's just sort of a cosmetic thing that it's worth keeping doing what we're doing anyway?
Thank you, Roy. I did see Kevin's presentation. He did talk about, you know, treating the symptoms as opposed to treating the disease. I think that what Kevin said has some merit, just in terms of recognizing that that's what's taking place. Certainly, the, the, you know, hydrogen peroxide treatment and sonic treatments that have been taking place are somewhat experimental. They can certainly help to relieve temporary symptoms. We're looking at algae harvesting as well, which I think would have an even greater benefit to the lake. What I've said over time, even since we prepared the Lake Agawam Comprehensive Management Plan in 2009, is that you need small incremental improvements to protect the lake. And certainly, it has been demonstrated that the bottom sediments in the lake do flux nutrients to the water column that are causing some of the water quality issues and algal blooms. And it is important to look into removal of those sediments. Obviously, it is costly. So I think that other methods can and should be used. You know, Kevin used the term gimmicks, but these are known methods that have had beneficial results in other areas. And until we are able to secure funding to treat the disease, we may have to look at the smaller incremental improvements and treating some of the symptoms just so that we manage the lake as best we can under the circumstances. You have to remember that it's taken, you know, 100 years for sediment accumulation, the impervious surfaces in the village and impacts of the watershed and those things that we know impact water quality. It has taken time and we need to kind of look at ways to set back the lake in time to those times before all of these impacts have occurred. So that, that, that's my answer to it. It's a little bit long-winded, but you know, Kevin had some valid points, but I think that the efforts of the village have been very important to date and, and we're, you know, pleased to assist and evaluate these. And in each case, there should be some type of a report and assessment of the success of each of these projects.
Thanks for your contrasting opinion. Appreciate it.
I have a question too, Chick. Have you presented your data to the town trustees? And so where's the mayor's response to your data collection?
Joe, thanks. I believe the trustees are aware of it. That's, that's really a good point. Certainly, when the report is finalized, it'll be available for anyone to review. But I'll reach out to the trustees and make sure that they're aware. I did appear before the trustees at their last meeting to talk about, you know, some permitting for other measures. They're very supportive. They were participants in the Lake Agawam Have Action Plan, the Harmful Algal Bloom Action Plan that the DEC issued in 2020. And, you know, they're very interested in all of the efforts of the village. And obviously, it's their water body, so they're a key stakeholder. So I'll certainly reach out and make them aware that the village will have a final report under this grant and that'll be available for review. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McGlock. I would also add, I did have a conversation with Town Trustee President Scott Horowitz just the other week. And as Chick mentioned, they're very supportive of our efforts to help clean Lake Agawam. And they're also very supportive of our efforts to study the sediments and also undertake various short-term, medium-term and long-term functions to clean Lake Agawam. So just a big update there. Chick, I just have a couple of, two questions here. The other question that came up with Kevin McAllister, who made some good points, was that he suggested if when we dredge, we could actually take the dredged sediments and put them into the ocean. And I told him that, that when I, when I spoke with him, that would be a good solution if the DEC would allow that. Would you mind just commenting a little more about that process of being allowed, what to do with the dredged sediments if we even get to that point?
Sure. And actually, that, that information is available in the study itself. It was part of the screening study in 2019 and it is part of the current study, both the draft and what will be the final study. Kevin had spoken before to the, to the village trustees and had mentioned this. So we did look into it. It's not just the DEC. There are other agencies that would be involved in any type of permitting of ocean disposal of the material. We pointed out that, you know, it is an extremely complicated, long and potentially not successful permitting process. And it also has, you know, the potential for environmental impacts with open water discharge, even if it's during the winter and off-season. And it, it also has, you know, certain social factors, you know, anytime that we release water levels from Lake Agawam, you know, you've got people that are concerned, of course, about that material spilling out onto the beaches. So we're going to look at it a little bit further for the purpose of the final report based on Kevin's continued interest in this. And I will have some additional answers, but our initial sense was that it would be overly complicated and potentially unsuccessful to pursue that option.
Thank you, Chick. And my last question for, I believe the next steps right now is this is a great study. We now have a full study of all the sediments across Lake Agawam. That's a big, big step in the right direction. I think what we should do is we should move forward and issue an RFP to contract for services and to perform the dredging. Chick, we need to use your help on that front. I know that Dr. Gobler said that he has an individual who can put together an RFP for us. I believe the Lake Agawam Conservancy said they would pay for the services for the RFP. And then once we have an RFP, we can get some pricing for the various options that you presented. And then one option that I think we should strongly consider is some light dredging on the north side of the lake, where there's a higher concentration of some of those metals. And while it's not dredging the entire Lake Agawam, it would be a good start to dredge those shallow areas that have the highest concentration of the inorganic sediments. And that would also be a little more cost-effective than dredging the entire lake. So that, I think, should be the next step. We have this great study, so now we can actually move forward with the dredging. So with that said, I'd like you to see if there's any other comments from the boards, board members. If not, we can move forward with our second board presentation. With is the monthly treasure report, Shirley Cable-Batch CPA, our village administrator and treasurer. Shirley, can you take it away?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to sign off if that's okay. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chick. Appreciate the help. Talk to you later.
Very good. Thanks.
If you could put up that first slide, this is treasure report. One with the letterhead and the seal that says. Perfect. Thank you. So I'm presenting the treasures report, monthly treasures report as of April 30th. Our revenues are trending about $2.5 million ahead of budget. Our adopted budget revenue is about $32.2 million and so far we've received $37, $34.7, as I stated, $2.5 million ahead of budget. Revenue, revenue drivers, major revenue drivers, utilities, tents. We had seen the budget by about $133,000. County Public Safety Sales Tax, we've seen the budget by about $57,000. Building permits, we are over by about $1 million. We had budgeted $1.3 and we're currently at $2.3 as the mortgage tax. $1.7 million exceeds the $850,000 budget by $89,000. Expenditures are adopted budget $32.2. As of April 30th, we had expensed about 91% of our budget, $29.5. I will say that health insurance, we are going to have a shortfall in our health insurance. There'll be a budget modification on the next meeting. We're expecting it to be about $300,000. Have a budget modification for that, and that is due to the fact that we received our premiums in December. For January 1st, our 22, 23 budget reflects that spike in the health insurance costs. And at this point in time, we're going through beginning our year-end process with the board, with our department heads. I've been meeting with some of the department heads and doing some open purchase orders, closing out some items that, you know, old purchase orders remaining balances. We have some more money in the budget. And we are in the process of beginning the year-end close. So we expect that next two or three Florence, there'll be some year-end expenses coming through and then we're hoping to start our year-end close by the middle to the end of June. And the auditors are planning to be here in August to start the audit earlier this year. There are two other, three other items. There was some public comment at the last meeting regarding some questions about financial statements. They were presented by Curdely Allen. And trustee Brown had asked me if I could just respond to some of those questions. And Kat, that would be on the second sheet that's in there on right next to them. No, the analysis fund balance, that's the one. Thank you. So the question came up, some of the, the handouts that Ms. Allen had handed to the board after her public comment was, you know, didn't some of the numbers that were in the financial statements seem to add up to revenues and expenditures in hand and fund balance? So I went through and did a quick analysis just to show, you know, where the money came from and where it went, what we had left over. So our audited unreserved fund balance at the beginning of the last fiscal year, June 1st, 2020, was $10.5 million. We brought in $30, $35.3 million in revenues. Our expenditures were about $28.8. So our excess revenues over expenditures were $16.499, $16.5 million. We had operating transfers in the amount of $5.3 million. And I think that was the question that came up is where, where did that $5 million go? Our ending fund balance ended up being somewhere about $9.8. So if you look down at the bottom of the page, you will see that last year we had very active, that's very active transfers. We had $975,000, which is the transfer that we make in our budget every year for our capital reserve. And that was an operating, that's considered an operating transfer on the financial statement. There was a transfer that the board had to make, if you remember, January 2021. Our ambulance barn construction project, that was a bonding project, had run over cost. And there was a $626,000 deficit that the board had to, shortly after I scored in, I had a meeting with the GC from the ambulance barn with a lot of vendors that needed to be paid. And I noticed that there was deficit, so we had to go through, do an analysis. I met with GC and the board had to appropriate someone who's surplus to finish out that project, complete and make little final payments to the vendors. And we transferred the mayor's initiative to transfer $3.7 million to water quality projects. So that was the $5.3 million that was in question as to, you know, there's $5 million that's not accounted for in the fund balance. It's because it's been sent to, well, basically $600,000 is used to complete a capital project and $3.7 and $975 to restricted results. So that is, I'm hoping that that answers the questions that were raised here for the board as to how we went from beginning to ending fund balance. The other two things on my report, we have capital budget discussion tonight with the board. You know, make a decision as to whether or not we wanted to adopt, make any further changes and defer. And in addition to that, we have, we are in the final stages of cashless transactions at the beach. We purchased some iPads and there's some training going on, so we're ready for Memorial Day weekend. So that when folks come down, they will be able to pay with Apple Pay or rent their chairs and umbrellas, et cetera. So just wanted to see if the board had any questions. You know, so when you, when you check in, how many update, just the daily tests.
So a lot to, a lot to discuss here, actually. This is a work session, so of an opportunity to talk amongst ourselves and, and debate and deliberate publicly. So we'll get to that in just a second. Shirley, and a quick question. You had showed the approximately five, $5.7 or so million of transfers, but there was 5.3 exactly. There was, there was about a $1.2 million difference between the, the $6.5 million we'll call profit versus the, versus the $5.3 million of transfers. Could you just speak to the board a little bit about the remainder of that $1.2 million?
Well, actually, there's $1.9 more. So if you look down, what happens between total fund balance on our, it's, it's kind of a complicated topic. So what happens in fund balance is made up of unreserved fund balance, which is available to be spent, and restricted fund balance. So at the end of every year, the auditors have to make changes to our restricted fund balance as well. So the increases, so we had an increase in restricted fund balance and employee reserves. There was $1.5 million that had changed year over year. Part of that had to do with the increase in the value of the LOSEC, which is actually restricted, our LOSEC for ambulance buyer. Whenever there's an increase in value in fund, that has to be adjusted and set aside as part of our fund balance. It is reported on our fund balance. And there was also an increase in encumbrances with year-end, any purchase orders that are open or any prepaid expenses also has to set aside out of fund balance. And that's basically an accounting entry and that actually has to be adjusted and reduced from the unreserved fund balance and put into restricted fund balance.
Okay. Thank you very much. So a few other quick things here. We have a, we have a tax stabilization fund resolution on our agenda tonight. And this tax stabilization, we're asking for, I believe, $150,000 to be put into a tax stabilization fund. Given what we're seeing with the increase of the health insurance premiums, as well as we look at the stock market where it's been the last couple of months and the likelihood of going into a recession, that would likely lead now into an increase in the health insurance premiums that we're again going to expect, but also a dramatic increase in our retirement contributions that we have to keep up with our, our various pension contributions. So my question to this board is perhaps we should consider actually increasing our contribution to the tax stabilization fund given the looming recession that might be coming our way. And in addition, again, healthcare premiums as well as additional pension contributions. So that's something that, we can discuss this now, we can discuss it when we get to resolution number seven tonight. It's $125,000 entry to the tax stabilization reserve, but that's just something to consider. But I, I can guarantee everybody, when we get to next year's budget, and again, we just adopted our current budget, but there's going to be some, some But there's going to be some, some issues as far as some of the increases that we're going to be required to pay, so.
And Mayor, just that, on that point, when we were preparing the budget, you were very, you know, you had said you were very concerned about that. And one of the reasons, one of the uses of this reserve, not just stabilizing the tax rate, but it can also be used as a. Unexpected revenues or spikes in revenues or increases in expenditures. So if we had this in place, we would have been able to use it to fund that shortfall we have this year in our health insurance. And it is, it is like a rainy day.
Right, and I, I think we will actually need this fund for the next fiscal year, fiscal year ending twenty twenty four. But I think this will come in handy, and I'm not sure a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars will be enough. This is not something we've been getting in the past, so we currently are at zero, but I still think over, more than a hundred and twenty five thousand would be helpful. The other thing, and I could actually turn that over to comments now, the other thing I'll say is with the increase in the building department revenues. Over, over one million dollars above budget, which is excellent, you know, thanks to our building department. I would also say that we might want to replenish our clean water infrastructure fund. We'll need that for clean water projects as well as potentially sewer system. So if there is some leftover funds, I would also urge this board to consider transferring that to the clean water infrastructure fund. Those are my, my points, and then I could also get to the capital budget later. Again, we can talk about this at a resolution and discussion, we talked about it now, this board. Just want to see if anyone has any comments or questions regarding that.
Great to add additional funds to the reserve fund, where are you going to get them from? What pockets you're going to take them out of?
The trustees, they would come out of the unreserved surplus. Our, our fund balance policy and, and recommended practice is generally to keep between fifteen and twenty percent. Of our budget in unreserved surplus, and that number is about six and a half or seven million dollars. Right now, we have nine point seven, and like we have more after the end of the year because we do have the revenue surplus. So we could put, you know, up to a half a million dollars and still be well within our.
Isn't this little reserve we're creating with the one twenty five in the reserve we already have, it's the same thing?
No, it's not the same thing. We did have an employee benefit reserve, employee benefit reserve was used to pay for, it could have been used to pay for. Any type of employee benefit, we've been using it for retirement payouts, and that was basically. Depleted this past year, as we discussed in our meeting. So this actually gives the board a little bit more leeway because you can use it for preparing the budget. If you're, you know, to the point where there might be more than a two and a half percent increase in the tax rate because of budget constraints. You can use the money to swap and blow to the taxpayers there. You can also use it, for example, in twenty twenty, we had a problem with loss of revenue. We could have used it to help, you know, fund our budget because we had an unexpected, after we adopted the budget, we had an unexpected loss of revenue. Or after we adopted the budget, we had an unexpected spike in expenditure. That's another, another allowable use, and it's basically at the board's discretion.
Expenditures just happen to exceed revenue because of inflation or because of whatever, and you end up in a debt situation. Doesn't it just come out of the reserve anyway?
It would, if you had a reserve surplus, but what we have, what this actually does is formalize. Formally earmarks the money for that purpose. So a board would not be able to say, look, all this, and we have all this unreserved surplus, let's just spend it on this or that or paving or whatever. You know, a board would do, this money is specifically earmarked for that purpose. And that's why it's, people call it a rainy day.
It would be a board decision, I would, I would just recommend maybe doubling that to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would give us a little extra room. But I do think we're going to need it, when I look at, again, when we look at where the economy is headed. We want to do the best we can to protect our village residents and taxpayers, and I think this tax stabilization fund or the rainy day fund. Would protect us in the event of, of an upcoming recession, in the event of increased retirement contributions, healthcare insurance premiums. And also, we're looking at future retirements, and we all know how much those retirements have cost us. And further retirements might also require the use of this tax stabilization fund. And again, due to contracts, we did not negotiate, but unfortunately, we'll have to, we'll have to make sure our taxpayers take care of.
So you. Because of the potential, um, economy slowdown or?
There are some, some, some of the revenues that we have in our budget are based on the state budget. We have fortune, we're fortunate enough that our fiscal year, we usually know before we adopt our budget. The state is late, you know, their budget, we kind of know, their budget stopped it before us. Anything could happen, but what would normally happens when it comes to the state revenues. We don't really depend too much on state revenue. We get twenty three thousand dollars in each, in the money, we. We have, we, we did get, we, we did get some paving money, we get about three hundred thousand dollars of paving money. A lot of the money that we used for paving came from utility deposits. Or the utility workup, so that was about one point two million dollars to be added to our paving budget this year. The other thing that the board could do is start the fund with two fifty. After we finished the year end closing, the auditors said the financial statements, then the board could determine at that point in time. Whatever, within your surplus, we end up having on our audit, on, you know. Are the result of the audited financials could make allocations to the other reserves and allocate more money at that. Which will be happening probably sometime in October.
Interesting, McGlocklin, I would, I would also add that, you know, Gary's been very helpful in getting some of the, that, that money from the utility deposits. But those, I believe, would be earmarked for paving and couldn't be used in your changing road. Right, because we actually were seeing if we can use certain, certain utility deposits for other roads. But we're, unfortunately, we were earmarked for specific roads. Obviously, there are some roads that need, need paving more than others, but in some situations, we only, you have, you don't really have. But we did.
Basically, um, national grid, so the national grid and. What Gary decided to do was just plan and pay there.
There wasn't a paving gone during COVID.
That's true.
And on that, that topic, thank you to trustee aggressive for, for really giving the charge with, with Gary and the public works department to. Making sure many of the roads were paved, a lot of our residents will see paving throughout the village, and, and that was our brilliant part two. The W B mayor as well as Gary and the team at the Iber Park. We did a nice, nice job, South Fork Asphalt and other contractors that we use. So I guess my question, next question to the board is while we have this discussion going, should we talk about the capital budget now? Or would you guys like to wait until we get to the resolution later in today's meeting? Okay, so we'll get to that. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I'm happy to see that you decided that the tax stabilization. On, I think it's important for the business that we stated, so I'm glad I brought this to the board's attention.
Okay, very good. In conclusion, that's, that's good news on the final stages of cashless transaction at Google Beach. We've got the capital budget later tonight, and we'll keep on moving, so thank you, Shirley. So we'll move forward with our first public hearing tonight, and I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing regarding local law nine dash two thousand twenty two. The proposal to amend the village code by adding the New York State Open Meeting Law Regarding Video Conferencing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? So I'll turn this over, is this Shirley, would you like to take this or should Ken?
This is a Ken.
Okay, Ken, the attorney Ken Gray is here, so he'll brief us briefly quickly and, and we can move on.
Sure. Good evening, everyone, how are you? Excellent, excellent. So, you know, a, as you know, you know, since COVID, you know, March twenty twenty, there's been a lot of executive orders. Giving municipalities, public bodies, the ability to continue their, their, their efforts. By allowing remote call in, video conferencing, whatever you want to call. That had always been in effect, but there were certain restrictions to it. So, you know, after going through a number of executive orders and a number of. Leg- legislation. They have now. Tried to codify as best they can, and instead of them codifying exactly what needs to be done. What they did was they requiring, they, the state legislature, is requiring each individual municipality. Whether it be a village, a city, a town, a special district, to adopt their own regulations. But the regulations have to be consistent with what the state has adopted. In section one oh three dash A of the Public Officers Law. So we have taken that, we have, we have drafted legislation which will allow for video conferencing. Now, it's important to note that it does not allow telephone participation by the public body. So if the, if, if a member of the public body, the board of trustees, or zoning board of appeals, or the planning board is going to participate. This does not allow telephone participation and has to be video conferencing. So that the public can see you, hear you, and if appropriate, participate. For instance, the mayor indicated earlier today that today is a work session, so therefore there is no public interaction with. The, with the public and the board. However, if it's a public hearing such as this is, the technology has to be in place to allow the public to interact live. And that, and, and that's important, and I, I think it's significant. But this is all it does, it gives us the option, and this proposed legislation. Allows the boards to make their, the individual board, zoning board, planning board. It gives them another tool in their toolbox that they're allowed to do, they're not required. They can, they can say, no, we don't, we're not interested, we only want to do in-person meetings with everybody. But this gives them a tool, and it gives this board a tool to allow this type of participation in a meeting. So with that said, are there any questions from the board members?
I have, I am correct again, so if, when we adopt this, if we adopt it. Are all the women required to always attend meetings? So let's say. You know, I am not able to attend a meeting. Do I am, I just play a doctor's note to the board, where, where is the, what's the call?
So, so trustee McLaughlin, let me answer that question. What, what, what the, what the state law requires, and which is incorporated into this, is that a minimum of a quorum. So a minimum of three of the five need to be in a physical location where the public can attend. So either you have, you have Village Hall where the, where the public can attend. At least three of the board members, which is a quorum, need to be present at that location. If, if, let me finish, if the village decides to have public participation at Village Hall. The, the, the fire, the fire barn, the barn, and three. They borrow space from the town of Southampton Town Hall to allow people to go and participate. You can have three trustees, one at each of those three locations. And the other two trustees can remote in from video conference from wherever location they can. But it's got to, the, the reasons have to be based upon what's written in the state law. And proposed in this local law is that the member, meaning the member of the public body. Either a trustee, a zoning board member, or a planning board member is unable to physically be present due to extraordinary circumstances. Which include disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities. Or an unexpected factor or event which precludes the member's physical attendance at such meetings. I, I, I think. In my opinion, if a board member states. That he's ill and unable to attend, that's sufficient. The, the law does not require a doctor's note or anything like that. So I, I think it's similar to, and I, I've used this analogy before. Similar to a board member's decision to recuse himself from a particular matter. I, I, I think it's up to the individual board member, who acting in good faith, will determine whether or not he, he or she meets one of those criteria. To say, I'm going to participate, but I'm going to do so remotely because I fit, I, I, I fit one of these categories. So I, I hope I answered your question.
Just clarify, so people, people members of every body have to be physically present. To, for the public to be with them.
I, in order for the meeting to be in compliance with New York State Open Meetings Law. And with this proposed village code, three. Four, three board members of a five-member board must be participating at a location. Where residents can in-person participate in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Can I have two questions? One is in section G, it talks about that the recordings will remain on the village website for five years. Recordings will be transcribed on request. You and I have had some conversations with Jeff Linkoff from the Z D A about transcribing meetings. During those conversations, it became clear that the cost of doing those transcriptions is not frivolous. Six or seven hundred dollars to transcribe an entire meeting. Is, is this transcription a requirement of the New York law? And must this be the village's obligation to pay for it, or could the requestor be required to pay for it?
So, so, so the answer is, yes, it's a requirement under the state law. And I believe this falls outside of the FOIL Freedom of Information Law. Which allows you to charge a reasonable fee. The, the state law on the open meetings law requires you to trans, transcribe upon request. I do not believe that you can recoup that cost from the requestor.
My second question, I'm a little gun shy after, you know, we've had this issue. With regarding foil and the village's liability if we don't fulfill foil requests exactly accurately. And here we are engaging to make sure the meetings are live, and make sure people can talk, and make sure everybody can be heard. And let's just say that doesn't go so great, and so there's a technical issue over there, some oversight. I don't want to expose the village to somebody suing us because they couldn't participate in the Zoom meeting. And all of a sudden, we have to pay a settlement because of that, so would you consider that a possibility of this law?
Well, well, here, here, it's, it's two different things. One, under the FOIL law, Freedom of Information law, those have to do with document requests. And the law is very specific that if there's a finding that the village did not comply. That they, the court can issue legal fees on, on that non-compliance, for lack of a better word. Under the open meetings law, which requires you to, you know, notice meetings and, and, and post the material. In advance of the material of the meeting that's going to be discussed. There's no such similar provision in that open meetings law, which entitles people to legal fees. So the, if you, if, if a municipality violates the open meetings law by either not posting. Not providing the documents in advance to the public as to the material that's going to be discussed at the meeting. The, the recourse with a lawsuit would really be a. A vacating any action that took place in violation of the open meetings law. It, they would, could potentially nullify any actions that took place. But there is no provision there for the issuance of legal fees. So we're talking about two different things, we're talking about foil, we're talking about open meetings law. Although they sound, you know, they're, they're interrelated, no doubt about it. There are, they are separate sections of the law. There are, they are separate sections of the law.
Thank you. Thank you, Ken. Thank you, trustee Stevenson. I had one quick question also regarding section G that trustee Stevenson was referring to. Ken, what about special meetings? Is there anything that the state law specified regarding special meetings? And is there anything that we need to include in this law? So for example, it says the village shall report each meeting that uses video conferencing and such recordings must be posted or linked to the village website within five days of the meeting. What about during a special meeting?
Special meetings also need to be posted. Prior to the adoption of this section one oh three A of the public meetings law, there was a separate requirement as to the posting of information on special meetings. That has not been addressed in, in New York State one oh three A.
So is there any action that we can take regarding special meetings or is there nothing that we can do at this time?
No, my recommendation is that we just follow the requirement in section one oh three A of the New York State Open Meetings Law, excuse me, Public Officers Law. And, and, and we should be in compliance.
Okay, thank you.
And can I have one last question? It's just to clarify. Anyway, it's does the video recording ever supplement for the minutes at the, for minute that I mean? I'm trying to say is, so we have written me, written me, we ask your doc. I mean, every meeting we have. Anyway, does recording ever supplement for a written, for written?
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I, I think your question is, does the video recording of the meeting supplement the written meeting, the written minutes of the meeting? The, the answer is yes. Of course it supplements it. So what, what the village is required to do is post the recording. Then you have to put minutes up. The minutes of a meeting not necessarily are verbatim transcription of the meeting. Minutes can, or, or the minutes that you do now are not verbatim transcription of the meetings. So we have three things here. We have one, we have the video, which you're required to post and keep on the website for five years. Then the village clerk is required to prepare village board minutes, board minutes, which again are not verbatim minutes, which this board typically adopts, reviews the draft minutes and adopts them at the next board meeting. For instance, I think on tonight's agenda is a resolution to consider adopting the proposed minutes from the May 12th meeting. And then the third item is if somebody asks for an actual transcription of the meeting, the village is required to do that. And obviously those minutes would be verbatim, verbatim minutes. And what I would recommend and I have, we've had these conversations, is that you turn the video over to a, a court reporter and they transcribe the minutes verbatim. So there, we're talking about three different documents, for lack of a better word.
I, I, again, I, I just want to clarify for the public.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Is there any public questions or comment? All right.
Did you know that, um, there's two transcripts? One is YouTube. You can just click on it and it transcribes below it. And also Zoom has a transcription also, which I copy every single time.
Okay.
Thank you. That's very helpful. That's great. I was thinking there was some app or something that could easily transcribe. Thank you, Ken. All right. So with that, with that being said, I guess we'll, I'd like to make a motion to, to close the, the public hearing regarding local law nine dash two thousand twenty-two. The amendment of the village code and New York State Local Meetings Law regarding video conferencing, motion to close. Is there a second? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. We'll move to the second public hearing tonight, which is the public hearing regarding local law ten dash two thousand twenty-two. The proposal to amend the village code to add home furnishing showroom in the highway business district and the village business district with special exception use. I'll make the motion to open. Is there a second? All in favor? So I'll turn this over. I think I saw Alex Wallet, who is an attendee. Alex is the director of planning for Southampton Village. We'll let Alex present this and what this is, and then we'll turn this over to public comments. Thank you very much, Alex, for being with us tonight.
No problem. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Let me just see if I can start my video here. Oh, no. Okay. Sorry about that. I'm on a different device than usual. Sure. Well, I don't have a formal presentation on this, but I'll, I'll start just by saying that the idea of this is to allow some added flexibility within the highway business owning district. And that encompasses really just a handful of properties on the south side of County Road thirty-nine in the vicinity of, of Hampton Road. And just a handful of properties on the west side of North Sea Road, also in the vicinity of Hampton Road, near where the McDonald's is. This zoning district allows a variety of different uses. For example, it allows contractor offices. It allows showrooms for motor vehicles. But what it currently doesn't allow is the uses that you might see really directly across the street of County Road thirty-nine in the town portion. For example, where you have, you know, a carpet showroom, a furniture showrooms, where you have buildings dedicated to tile and marble and things like that. Under our code, those uses are grouped in with retail. And there's nothing that distinguishes them right now and retail is not prohibited in that corridor. So what this code amendment would do would distinguish between these type of uses from retail. These are typically larger footprint uses that are used as, as showrooms where you might have, you know, samples on display. But you're not necessarily filling up a cart full of convenience items. These are really items that are typically on display. There may be some incidental sales, but they're really being ordered for delivery at, at a later date. And so the proposal is to add these larger showroom type uses, which are generally very low traffic uses as a special exception use. So that means they would go to the Board of, of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Zoning Appeals would determine whether it's an appropriate location for that in order to be approved. And we feel that's consistent with some of the other uses in that, that zoning district, as well as what's already existing in that corridor on, on the town side. Because it is established as a use that's distinct from retail, we did also want to address if it were to occur in the village business district. The code establishes a showroom as being really a, a larger footprint. We're talking about thirty-five hundred square feet. So I think it's, it's unlikely that you would see uses like that within the village business district. Anything smaller than that would still be regulated as retail. So the smaller kind of boutique style businesses that you may be familiar with in the village business district, there would be no change. Those would continue to be treated as retail uses. But if something with a larger footprint were to move into the village business district, it would also be treated as a special exception use. So it would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And they would determine whether it would be an appropriate placement there. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, Alex, for the presentation. Again, board members, if there's any comments or questions, feel free to direct them to Alex, who helped craft this law.
So I just want to just clarify, the difference would be it, it's already zoned for warehouse. So it's just a matter of the showroom.
So right now it would apply to areas don't highway business. Right, right now, there's a lot of different uses there. Primarily that quarter is used for, for offices right now. But it would allow, for example, if a contractor would have an office there, if they were to do work on the premises, that would be allowed. Restaurants are allowed. You can have auto repair and garages. Those types of uses are, are allowed in that district.
But there was a car showroom there for many, many years. That was the property from the, if I'm not mistaken, the old linen Cadillac.
That's right. So you're talking about the property, I believe that's on the southeast corner of Hampton Road and Flying Point Road. Correct. So an auto showroom is something that's allowed in the district, but if that auto showroom decided it wanted to sell cabinets and be a cabinet showroom, that gets lumped under retail in, in the current code. So it would not be a permitted use. And that's what this code amendment would address.
I, I know there was a study done at Lee for North Sea Roads several years ago in regard to, to doing, giving, giving over way for more retail office business, whatever it was. Have you seen this study or have knowledge of it?
I don't believe that I've come across that study.
We, it was commissioned by the planning commission back in early point, point ten. So the study, I believe was, uh, I believe it did also involve, I believe that it ended at the, at, at the end of the year. Business, so, um, anyway. Obviously, I'll talk some of the language and I'm at, at, at the time I get qualified. But I would encourage you to, you know, see how you could potentially improve on any drawing in that area.
Right. So they give it that. And then, as you know, the, the comprehensive plan for the villages and the process of being updated, which some recommendations for, for the business districts. Be implemented.
Of course. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I jump in for a second?
Feel free, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you. So two things I just want to point out, the village did receive a letter from the Suffolk County Division of Planning Environmental and Environment, excuse me, saying that they've reviewed this and they believe this to be a decision of local determination. So they have given us local authority to move forward with this legislation. The second thing that we have is an environmental assessment form was completed. And it's the recommendation coming from Nelson Pope and Voorhees is that it's a unlisted action. However, based upon their review and their submission of determination of significance, that no significant adverse environmental impacts are anticipated. So therefore they're recommending a negative deck, negative declaration of environmental impact on the adoption of this local law.
Thank you, Ken. I'll make one further comment before opening this up to the public. But part of the genesis of this amendment to our local code in the highway business district was that when you look around the village, you'll see some properties that are dilapidated, that are vacant, and that could use further investment for business. And we have a very small highway business district. But some parts of this highway business district could use some further investment. And this amendment to this code will help with outside investment in our, our village. The other thing I'd like to point out is that through the update of our comprehensive master plan, I think we should further look at the highway business district to further make amendments because it is quite archaic, the way this law stands today. There's, the use is extremely limited. It's actually even more limited than the town's highway business district, which allows for more uses. So I think that there's work for further study and that we can continue to improve our highway, our highway business district zoning in or zoning code in general. But for now, we have this law in front of us. So I just wanted to add, add that comment. With that being
I, I have one quick question. And Ken, are, are the, are the individual, are the individual applicants still required to go through?
Yes, the answer is yes. The, the zoning board of appeals will need to review secret.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to open this up to comments from the public. I see John, feel free to come forward.
Good evening, board members. Thanks for the opportunity to address you. I have, I sent this letter by email today, but it was rather late. So I have and it's it's a letter that references not only the local law, but two prior pieces of correspondence, one from February fifteenth and one from March twenty first regarding this area of the law generally. I also wanted to note that before I forget, there's a letter in support of the the, not only from my client, which I'll talk about more, but Marilyn Goldberg, hopefully that's made into the file. It's, it's site-specific, but it would be supportive of the, the zone change. She also refers to you as judges, which is sort of nice. So she's elevated you. In any event, we, thank you. We represent B R L Hampton Road LLC and the owner of six thirty Hampton Road. And we write this letter in support of the proposed changes to chapter one sixteen that would create a, a use permitted upon special exception of home furnishing showroom. And I think Alex explained pretty well, in addition, of course, the definitions and the code, proposed code changes, what, what that is. I, I think it's fair to say that the proposed amendment will bring the code into greater conformity with highway business uses allowed in other areas of the East End, including the town of Southampton. Now, there's some things that we're glad that we live in the village and we don't have and that's why the village has a son, son. But there are other things that the town has done that are a little bit more acceptable and just recognize more current land uses. I don't think I could be wrong, but I don't think the village code as it relates to highway business uses has been changed in at least forty, forty-five years. It's rather, if I may, it's a, and, and the blame doesn't lie here because no one's looked at it in such a long time. But the, the code is rather restrictive and has a very limited menu of highway business uses. So for example, automobile dealerships are allowed in the relevant zone, which was the historic use. And this was then a Buick Cadillac. But I mean, if you look at, and I've done probably most of the automobile uses in, in the town, Mercedes and Lexus and additions to storms and dating myself by name, but most of the, most of the, the current requirements for automobile uses, they want to see at least three acres. For example, the side of my clients, an acre and a half, which is probably why it's been sitting there. So this really creates significant issues with what you have in the existing highway business zone. So we're really hoping that the, just to step into a little bit more modern industry standard realities with these changes. And of course, it would, it would be, it isn't, it doesn't just fall on this particular property, but it would allow a use that is, would be able to invigorate that that corner. I think it's very important. It's one of the, one of the main emphasis into the village of Southampton. You have where County thirty-nine turns into twenty-seven, then you have Hampton Roads, you have Hampton Water's Gate, right? Hill Street, which is fantastic. Then you have North, North Sea Road, which, you know, has some older, you know, commercial uses. And then you have, you have North Main Street, which I think there's a nice life coming into it now. So, but this has been problematic since for, for quite some time since the Cadillac dealership. So this would allow us to have a, a use. It's different from a retail use. If you could just give me a little bit of email on this, I think I just quit it. But what, one thing that wisely the drafters did was they, they impose some special exception standards. And I, and I think they're quite good. First of all, the lot area has to be forty thousand square feet. So this is not something that you'd want to make sure that you can't have, you know, multiple sites that would be this way. And you, and you, you don't want this fragment all over the highway business. So it's limited as, as they are. And so, so it imposes a fairly strict requirement. Forty thousand square feet, which is a builder's acre, but essentially an acre. Primarily has to be dedicated to the display of home furnishings and similar items. Primarily has to be dedicated to the display of home furnishings and similar items. So. Display. And then important, which I think as anyone travels down County Road. Thirty-nine, thirty-nine, thirty-nine? I'm confusing with fifty. What's the one in Riverhead? That's fifty-eight, thirty-nine. We all come into the village. Yeah, okay. But you come in there and I think there's been a lot of great changes in there, but it's still like. A lot of outdoors, outdoor display stuff is problematic. So the drafters wisely said that's got to be out of, out of be, has to be out of fifty feet. The front yard. And even then it has to be a limited area and that'll be subject to control of not only the zoning board of appeals. So it's not, I don't think there's a fear of having this. Uncontrolled. You've put some very specific and wise controls in here and given and made it not just for permitted use. It is a use permitted upon special exception, which means you have a whole host of standards. It's not like a variance. It's used as permitted upon special exception trouble, which doesn't mean you just file a site plan application for the planning board. So any board of appeals and meet those standards. All of which, which deal with aesthetic things, traffic and all that sort of stuff. And as Ken pointed out, each individual application also has to have its own separate. Review under the state environmental quality review act, even though this Nelson Pope Voorhees has indicated that they think a negative declaration is appropriate to passage of legislation. That doesn't obviate the need for seeker review on a site specific basis. So I think you have plenty of safeguards here. I think it'd be a great boon to site specific. It's although it's not, it's not, it's would. It would pertain to any. Part of the highway business zone that would could utilize this. But that forty thousand square foot requirement is, is pretty significant. Where's the others? The. There's another, there's another highway business zone. It's interesting. Both the highway business zones on Hampton Road were created. For the existing automobile dealerships. It's one of the, we speak Grattan Chrysler Plymouth Dodge, which is now, you know, the Land Rover and.
Now you're really dating yourself.
Well, that was, John Grattan was my uncle. But in any event. But in any event. In any event.
John, did you also represent the Gremlin Corporation that built the?
No, I didn't do anything with Soto. But in any event, that site there, which is now Land Rover and. Jaguar. Is that site and this site are the only sites on Hampton Road. So it's a limited. Places where this could land. And with that. In hopes of avoiding any more comments about my age, I'll sit down unless there are questions from the board.
Any questions, comments from board members? Ken, was that, was that N P V that that said it? Would, would be a neg deck or was that Suffolk County Planning Department?
No, the Suffolk County just. Gave us local determination. They have no input. The neg deck actually comes from this village board. Based upon the environmental assessment form that Nelson Pope and Voorhees helped prepare for us.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and honest, that needs to be added to Charlene. That needs to be added to the resolution. Number four. Of the proposed resolutions. If the village is going to pass this, one of the things that need to be added to that resolution is that the board determines this to be an unlisted action. And adopts a negative declaration concerning environmental impact.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Ken. We can add that. And Alex, thank you very much. Thank you to N P V for their, their work on the E I S forum. And thanks everyone for getting this to Suffolk County Planning Commission. For local determination. Is there any other comments from the public?
Just, just one comment. I, you thanked a couple of people. I think we should thank Kathy Eiseman from Nelson Pope Voorhees. For, for, for working on this project. She did a great job.
Yes, Kathy's been outstanding and been a big help on our, on our planning board for many years. And she's an excellent planner. So thank you Kathy as well. To any other comments? From the public? How would the board like to proceed? Should we make a motion to close? So I'll make a motion to close. I'll say make an official public hearing regarding local law ten dash two thousand twenty-two, the proposal man the village code. To add home furnishing showroom to the highway business district and village business district, special exception use. Is there a second? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments from the public. We'll move forward to discussion items. This is the review and discussion. Regarding the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three capital budget and three year capital plan. This again is a discussion item by our treasurer from Eagle Bets. And then we could have some discussion among our board.
Board members, just to recap, we had included tentative budget. While we were preparing the tentative capital budget was included in the tentative operating budget document. At that point in time, the board decided to table the adoption of the capital budget. Ending. The determination on what improvements that needed to be done according to the town board and C P F. Acquired property at Moses Lane. We then received updated quotes for the improvements there. And at previous meeting, the board had married. Sent it a resolution to authorize the board to set aside funds for Moses Lane. Or improvements which were already actually approved by the board. So they're just listed in the budget. So the first document you see is the tentative capital budget that is included, original document. The second page. In the document. The second page. Sorry, she's over there like a one woman band. These are the proposed changes to the tentative budget and I will review them and just list them and discuss each one with the board. We will be removing the proposed on trailer that was requested from the park's budget. As our parks crew leader, Steve Phillips had come and presented to me that he had available funds in his operating budget and decided to purchase it. Budget. So that would be reduced. We do have the allocation here for the three years. What is not included is the amount. The applying forces four hundred and fifty thousand. That's already been approved for most part. We already have the gazebo listed separately on the budget.
Sorry, not just been spent thus far.
Steve is actually pulling that out for me. It was not spent through the capital account and spent through trustee special projects. So he needed to go back and pull up. He wasn't sure which vendors we use. So we're in a process of coming up with that amount. We did find out, we did find out that we have an existing purchase order still outstanding with Reyes design. It was for fifty thousand dollars and we only paid about twelve thousand of that purchase order. So we do have an open purchase order for them. So we know the twelve thousand was paid because we did find that purchase.
And that's from twenty fifteen, the original design?
That one was actually from the payment that we have on the voucher is from twenty eighteen.
Right, but that's from the, from the original plan.
So we, we are going to have them update the plan. And in addition to that, we also, I did speak to any preservation fund. Attorney at least Congress of the town, and they are willing to assist us with some grant funding for the septic system. So that should bring the village's commitment down by about fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars on the rest. In addition to that. Trustee Stevens had, Stevenson had requested that, he received an email from our department. In the current fiscal year budget, capital budget, we had the board had made when we passed the adopt budget from last year. For this, this year here, the current fiscal year, there was a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar allocation made for acquired police vehicles. That the board had already approved. That was not spent at this point when there's been issue, supply and demand issues on. Getting most of the equipment that we did or did approve in capital budget. So he was actually. Did receive the information back from Gabrelly that stated that if he were to commit, the board would commit to buying two vehicles. One of them is in the outline year twenty-three, twenty-four. It would give us, they would hold the price for us. Otherwise they're expecting a six percent per year. Increase in the prices of fire police vehicles. I believe trustee had. Vehicles are twenty-two years old. The fire police vehicles of both.
Vehicles are. Year two thousand, twenty-two years old. Are functional, but they are twenty-two years old. Think of their own personal car, all the improvements that have been made within the last five years. The big issue with the fire police trucks is that they are not as safe as they probably should be. They do not have. Emergency lighting capability, which the new vehicle would have put up a flashing light. An automatic comes up from the roof of the truck so that approaching motorists are warned that there's accidents ahead. Fire police trucks are the trucks that are the first vehicles that come to any kind of. Emergency and they put out the cones and make sure all the people that are just driving around are. Don't get themselves in the first danger. The trucks also have, in order to get at the cone, you get at all the emergency equipment, the current trucks. The firemen must access equipment from the side of the truck. Sometimes it puts them. Very close to the middle of the road because they're on the side of the truck trying to get into the truck. The new truck design allows them to access it from the rear. So it's safer. Current vehicle doesn't have a generator capacity. So if they need to recharge their walking puck, these are all their safety communication equipment. They actually have a generator in the current truck that they take out of the truck, turn it on, so they can recharge their equipment. So. We need two trucks because the highway goes west and it goes east and depending on the traffic and the situation, you need to be able to get. One of the trucks stationed west in the village and one stationed. So it allows us to get to the accidents and the crises in a more efficient way. So. This is not. The guys who do this know what they're talking about. They want to be safe. They want to do a great job. If we want to let them do the job and keep us safe. I think we need to put this in the budget.
It was. I think it was for. Okay, so I think they need the commitment.
Okay.
They currently have that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their higher. So that's. I guess. The other change is. The board had committed to purchasing two police vehicles in the current capital budget. Those prices, those two vehicles. These vehicles came in well over budget and it, as such, the equipment. Setup and equipment for. Computer systems and lighting and the. Equipment that needs to be wasted available is another twenty-five thousand dollars and the chief police had requested that that be added to the capital budget. Towards the bottom, basically what we did as far as the replacement plan that the part probably did present. We decided to postpone the outline years at this point because we're only, our part district contract only brings us through the end of the year. We're currently renegotiating that contract for longer term. And at that point in time, we will read this with the. So. This would be the proposed changes. And then the final page actually is the. Plenary budget would be, including the page you go funding that was in the prior budget as well as any of the additions. That were made and basically presented for the board to review and consider which appropriately, you know, if anything needs to be amended or changed or deferred or deleted.
Any comments or questions from the board? And feel free to take your time. It's a.
I think she first out did send an email to the board today. Her Motorola Flex Management Record System that was in the original budget. Was moved to this year because her records management software is now obviously not being supported. And she had requested that anything were to be priority for this year that that would be. Number one.
I did speak with acting chief Rerto and lieutenant Wetter. And one thing that we'd like to do to make the village more secure, especially in light of. An ongoing theme that we're seeing across Long Island, especially in affluent areas that cars are being stolen from people who leave their car pops. We're discussing really enhancing our license plate recognition software and our cameras. So we actually did apply for a federal earmark grant for approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To, to purchase some new camera equipment, which I think we could use to help keep our village secure. So if we do not get those grants, we may at some point need to make an amendment to the capital budget for some of those camera systems. That's just one thing I wanted to add here. But I see, you know, there's cameras under twenty-five thousand dollars in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. For hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, but we also did apply for additional grant money for those as well.
I'm not sure. I know that they did have the, we've been going over some purchase orders today and. Open purchase orders and old capital purchase orders and acting chief, chief Hertau was going back to check to see if some of that was done.
Cause I remember last year there was an issue with, there was a camera down.
I'd like to add a question. Well, we're going to ask the acting chief. I understand in some cases that there is ability to lease some of the cameras. And because technology, as we know, every six months is advancing. So it might be something you want to consider. Looking into as well.
That's true. That's a very good point. We definitely should, should reach out to lieutenant weather or acting chief Hertau to see if there's anything you can do as far as the same day. Camera. So thank you, trustee Brown. The only thing I'll add is that we put together a three-year plan and adopted it. This is the two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three plenary capital budget. The two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand twenty-five capital plan. Again, this is the first time that the village has adopted a three-year capital plan. In the past, when there were capital needs, department heads would come to the village board and ask for a purchase and on a first come, first served basis. So this actually took a, a good deal of work and collaboration of all of our department heads so that we now could actually forecast and see. Three years worth of capital purchases. And I think that's a really great achievement for the village to have this all laid out for everyone to see. And you know, this is, this is again, a good thing that we've done. Very happy with this. And I appreciate Charlene, your help and our village board for having this three-year plan. I think this is good organization and a good fiscal practice to do so.
Well, I will say that at some point, our. Our capital reserves. Well, I will say that, um, at some point, um, our, um, our capital reserves, um, are going to, um, our capital purchases and expenditures are going to outpace our capital reserves. And, um, especially for, uh, some of the work that needs to be done, um, on the infrastructure, um, in the buildings, um, the price, you know, the prices of, of basically having the work done. Um, that's the, the biggest concern I'm, I'm hearing from department heads, um, on a daily basis is, um, you know, running out of money for this, you know, everything is costing more, uh, fuel prices are up. Um, I can't get, you know, two quotes because, um, you know, outside contractors don't have, um, hope. Uh, they have a six-month or a six-week or, uh, backlog on some of their work orders because they just can't find people to do the work. They can't find the equipment they need. Um, uh, Steve Phillips, our, our labor leader for the Parks Department, came to me today and he's been waiting for a very long time for a John Deere, um, tractor to come, arrived today and it's the wrong tractor.
I didn't hear that one.
And then he came to me and said, oh, it might get a little bit more money than what we have, but we did have enough money on the purchase order. So he said, I might just keep it because I need to get, get to work and get my work done.
And maybe you can, and dinner.
Well, he was going to reach out to him to find out if he, he said it was a little bit nicer than the one he ordered. He did have an extra one in the budget, so he said, rather than have to wait another six or eight weeks for the tractor, he rather just, just wanted to afford it. So he was going to get back to you, price to see if we had. But they're frustrated because they can't get the, they need to keep the jobs. So that's a cross board.
Capital budget also has a lot of good projects. We, uh, have appropriated, uh, $8,000 over, uh, three years to, uh, replace sidewalks. $850,000 over three years to replace curbs. Uh, and, uh, these are much-needed improvements to our village downtown. Have not been, uh, done in a very long time. And, uh, it's time that we actually started to invest more in our, our village. Uh, I walk around the downtown, I see some of the curbs in desperate need of repairs. So we've appropriated funds here that I think will make our village residents happy and improve our village downtown. I think this is excellent. Uh, we've also addressed needs of our, um, Department of Public Works by, uh, including, uh, snowplows, uh, snow blowers. Uh, we had a major snowstorm and after the snowstorm, uh, we were told that the snow blowers, uh, didn't work and hadn't been purchased in years. Uh, so, uh, we've got appropriations for, uh, two snow blowers, snow plows for, uh, for trucks. Uh, Village Hall hasn't been painted in decades, uh, and here we are. Time to strip and repaint Village Hall, beautify the village. It's going to be an expensive project, but this is the village of Southampton and this is obviously what capital budgets are for. Uh, and again, there's, uh, other great appropriations here, ample appropriations, uh, at the direction of our police department. And, uh, we've got, uh, even, we've got the environmental project, uh, by, uh, Justi Rest as far as the Big Belly Trash Cans. That was a recommendation actually from some of our local high school, I'm sorry, local middle school, uh, students who came out and, and actually showed us, uh, some Big Belly Trash Cans. They're solar-powered, uh, they use in other villages such as the village of Port Jefferson. And, uh, we'll have an appropriation for some of those Big Belly Trash Cans, which could be used that are beaches, uh, and could actually store more trash. So what people are used to seeing trash overflow, uh, some of these trash cans might actually help, uh, with that as well. So I think it's a good, good capital budget. And, uh, again, there's always opportunity to make amendments. If there's things we need or don't need, uh, we could always change this, but I think this is a good, a good step in the right direction. So that's all I have to say on this.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that, um, Sean, that he had, um, wanted me to express his thanks to the board. Yes, express his thanks to the board, um, on making it for $75,000 annual to, uh, for the, for the management, preservation of the area. They put that money to very good use and, um, we started to.
And it is. You could see the difference already.
Okay.
And, and just to also say that it even, uh, hopefully this is going to be adopted, but this is ruined. I mean, things change.
Well, as I said, you know, we did not have, um, you know, um, I, I, there's a, there's a, there are a few things that were added, um, and amended for the current year. Um, for example, um, our, our buildings and grounds foreman, Bob Hand, came to me and said, you know, we had a woman's on deck during that blizzard, said, I have a CDL license and I have a truck, we need a plow on the front. So we changed it, uh, the budget to add plow for trucks. He said, I can just get in the truck and plow. So, um, there were some things had to change, you know, uh, and then the prices, the prices have been at the greatest impact. The inflationary prices.
Thank you. So that was a discussion item. We'll have a resolution, uh, to adopt the, uh, proposed, uh, for the preliminary, uh, capital budget that we just discussed, so we can move to our suggested resolution. So Charlene, I'll let you take it from here.
Resolution number one, resolve the claims for the warranty that made twenty-four, twenty-two, totally 112,643,43 cents. Warrant fee seventeen general fund, $25,187 warrant and capital fund and $500 warrant to trust fund or ordered it as approved. There a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number two, we saw the reading of the minutes of the public session from May twelfth, twenty-two are dispensed and the minutes are accepted as filed with the village clerk and the actions taken at the meeting are hereby ratified and approved. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number three, resolve the Board of Trustees Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approved local law nine dash twenty-two. Proposal to amend village code by adding new New York State Open Meetings law regarding video. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number four.
Charlene, Charlene, before you read that resolution, I, I just want to, uh, for number four, I just want to add the language that the board, before it adopts the local law concerning home furnishing, that they determine that it's an unlisted action and adopt the negative declaration, uh, of environmental impact.
So can, would that be a further result on the resolution or is that?
Yeah.
Would that, okay. All right. So I can just add it as be a further result?
Correct.
Okay. So, uh, we will be amending resolution number four, um, to add, um, the, uh, determination of neg- negative declaration on secret determination.
Motion to amend.
Um, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the amended resolution, resolve, resolution number four, resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves local law ten dash twenty-two. The proposal to amend village code to get home furnishing showroom in the highway business district and village business district with special exception use. And be a further resolved, the Board of Trustees has determined that this is a type-two negative declaration for secret purposes. Um, do we have a motion on the amended resolution?
Make the motion.
Second?
Cor- correction, correction. It's not a type-two. It's an unlisted.
Unlisted.
Unlisted with a, with a negative declaration.
Declaration. Thank you.
Thank you.
So maybe can we just read that one, one time, just so we have the exact resolution.
Absolutely. So resolve the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton hereby approves local law ten dash twenty-two. Proposal to amend village code to get home furnishing showroom in the highway business district and the village business district with special exception use and be a further resolved that the Board of Trustees has determined that this is, would be a, 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 an unlisted secret negative declaration, determination. Uh, do we have motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number five, whereas the village of Southampton has submitted grant application to the twenty-two Town of Southampton Community Preservation on Water Quality Improvement Program to support estimated project costs associated with installation of pilot-scale injection whale permeable reactive barrier at the north end of Lake Agawam. And whereas the application was submitted in partnership with the New York State Center for Plainwater Technology, CCWT, at Southern Brook University. And whereas the grant requested, request of $396,000 was required capital cost for installation of the permeable, permeable reactive barrier for the purposes of intercepting nitrogen from groundwater flows prior to the discharge to Lake Agawam. Now be, now be it resolved that the village of Southampton Board of Trustees ratifies this proposal requesting funding from the Town of Southampton Community Preservation on Water Quality Improvement Program payment, $396,000. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Great discussion. I'll just let, I'll just let everyone know that this is a project that was two-plus years in the making. It required four phases and, uh, we now have our final grant request, uh, to the CPFWQIP, uh, for, and then $396,000 from a reactor barrier, relatively new technology, stopping, uh, polluted nitrogen-loaded groundwater from getting into, uh, Lake Agawam. Uh, this is a, this is a phenomenal project and I'm happy that we're applying to this grant. And knock on wood, I think it should be, uh, received in high regard, uh, by the town board. Uh, so, uh, I'm just very proud of his application and, uh, that's just what I wanted to let the board know. Uh, thank you very much, everybody.
On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number six, the Board of Trustees includes funding at a push, as a push here to Southampton Trustee, I think, program in the amount of $9,850 to be paid in trustee's special projects, eight, ten, ten, point four, four, four. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Another, sorry, quick discussion here. Uh, this is the second year we're going to be doing this. This was in collaboration, uh, with the, uh, the town trustees, trustee Ed Welker. And then, uh, President Scott Harwitz reached out to us and this is, uh, just, uh, you know, a partnership, uh, with the project led by the town trustees. Our relationship with the town trustees, in my opinion, has never been better. And this just shows our commitment, uh, to the town trustees. They've been an outstanding partner for us. Uh, this came to, uh, to our board, uh, last year and, um, this board was a big help. And then also at the time, uh, trustee Mark Parrish had also helped with this. And this is just our continued, uh, relationship, uh, with the, uh, the town trustees and, uh, happy to, happy to do this.
Charlene, that's the same amount as last year or it's?
Yes.
It's the same amount, right? I remember.
They had requested, they had requested a bit more, but, um, we had allocated the same amount, right, budget this year.
Okay. Thank you, Charlene.
Okay.
So on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number seven, resolve.
Charlene, can I jump in again? I apologize. For resolution number seven, uh, I, I, I recommend that you add the language that the, uh, the village contingency and tax stabilization reserve, um, you add in the word that it's subject to permissive referendum. Was that the next, that was the next resolution, correct?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. So I, I recommend that you add language that it's subject to permissive referendum. And then I, uh, if Kathy Sweeney is on the call, um, I just want to point out that she's required to, uh, post and publish this resolution, uh, for at least 30 days so that residents, if they want, they can circulate a petition to, um, have a permissive referendum. Okay. Thank you.
And the resolution also has to say that we, uh, don't be, uh, changed by order. This is, we already, I didn't call it being an exception.
I think that the, um, the rest, this is established according to the general notice, four, six. And so what the state, the state law prevails.
Okay.
So I think that, that, that we just referred that. Um, so resolution number seven, resolve Board of Trustees establishes a, a village contingency and tax stabilization reserve and a corporate, it's $125,000 from unreserved bond balance, subject to permission. Do we have a mission?
Motion.
Second?
Second?
Discussion will continue with the amount?
Yes.
Okay.
We're increasing it up.
Well, I, I, I'd rather have a discussion like what this and I like, I prefer to keep it like this, taking more conservative approach on here. Something new and this could always be amended in October. I, I feel that this is the right amount to start with. And as Charlene said, they could always amend this or increase it or allocate funds in October, again, of the year. I, I'd rather not predict with the future, I think this is a great first step.
I would like to see a, a higher amount. Um, I'd support it if it was a higher amount. Um, I know it is, it is a great first step, uh, but I also think that we are, uh, up against, uh, a, uh, a, you know, dramatic increase and like I said, the health insurance premiums as well as, uh, as well as the increase into the retirement contributions. And, uh, I don't think that 125,000 is enough. It's good to have a rainy day fund. We've never had this before. So it is a good first step. Uh, personally, I'd like to, I'd like to see the 250,000 here. Again, not a whole lot when you look at, uh, uh, where our budget was, what our operating budget surplus was. Uh, the, you know, uh, millions of dollars we have in our unrestricted, uh, reserve fund. So, um, you know, I, I don't think that, uh, an extra $125,000, which is, as I said, just going to be sitting there in the case of, of, uh, an increase of funds is really going to move the, the needle. But obviously if the board doesn't want to move this to the $230,000 amount, uh, that's obviously the board's decision. I can live with that, but I, my, my preference is, is 230,000. I don't know how the board feels about this.
We go with the majority, right? What's the question, Joe? Would you like to? Who works, increasing down or you want?
We're on vote, right? Special end of vote.
I, I, I cannot hear Trustee Brown.
I was getting some clarification and making sure that my understanding was correct with what Deputy Mayor said. I understand that the mayor was asking for 250,000 and at this time she was suggesting 125,000. But wanted to be clear to assure the board that in the case that we needed to go into that fund, that it would be there and available to us, that it could be amended. Is that the case?
Can we, can we just remind us, do we need a super majority to pass this or a super majority to spend it?
Um, actually, I believe you need both.
I'm so sorry. I need to understand again because I thought you just said to me that if we needed to go back and we could and you said yes.
If we need to go and add more to it, yes, we can.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
That's why I, I'm thinking about this when I put this proposal together.
Okay.
And I'm very comfortable. I think that's.
Cause I thought I just heard you say to me, no, we could not do that.
I mean, you need a super, it's a super majority. So that means four of the five trustees would have to vote in, in the department.
Okay, but that window is available.
The use or the allocation.
Okay. So that window is available should we need it, that we can do.
That's correct.
Again, you know, my position here is if you look at the increase of the health insurance premiums year over year, we're talking approximately $350,000 in that increase in premiums. And then this past year, because of where the, the stock market and our, and our pension contributions were, uh, a year earlier, where we marked market our, our pension contributions, uh, we're actually dealing with an all-time high, uh, in the stock market. Uh, a likely what we'll look in the past, a, a inflationary bubble and a lot of, a lot of stocks, particularly some of the tech stocks. So I, I really believe that when we, when we're going to see our, our contribution that we're going to need at the New York State Controller's Office and a bright guidance that we have to contribute, I think that we're going to be, uh, unpleasantly surprised by the amount of money that we're going to owe next year. And so that's why I'd like to, uh, set up, uh, just a larger, uh, contingency tax stabilization fund, uh, just to prepare for the worst-case scenario that unfortunately I think we're going to be looking at, uh, given where things are headed. Uh, to me, when I looked at, uh, you know, where the economy is, it looks like at least in the short term. Unfortunately, uh, things are getting worse, not better. And I, I think we, we need to do, uh, obviously, uh, you know, you know, we need to take action here to kind of protect our, our, our taxpayer and stabilize the, uh, our, our taxes moving forward.
Well, once again, I think this is a great start and I think we could revisit it after the year-end and the audits. The auditors come in in August and October, there's money available, we still need to put it in at a best time to get it to the end.
Hey, tough situation here. So that's going to be a super majority.
So we're going to need to roll for this. Um, since it's a majority, so, um, on the motion. Since it's a majority, so on the motion as it stands, Mayor Warren?
No.
Trustee Reston?
Yes.
Trustee McGlocklin?
Aye.
Trustee Stevenson?
Aye.
Trustee Brown? Resolution number eight, Board of Trustees hereby adopts preliminary twenty-two, twenty-three capital budget as amended by the attached changes as we adopted twenty-two, twenty-three capital budget. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine, resolve Board of Trustees accepts letter of resignation of Pedro Cuervo, Auto Equipment Operator Highway Department effective May seventeen, twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Nine.
Do you have any, any?
We have some, um, we have two job postings right now that are out, jobs posted. And we have some appointments tonight that are kind of shifting people around a bit in CPW. So we, but we do have, the job is posted.
We.
They have it on E as well.
We should however, consider a, I believe he was either a super heavy equipment operator or commercial.
He was maintenance. He was, he had, he did not have the title we both had had. And he was currently working in theme shops and he was also working as one of our main strippers on the road.
That he had a, a commercial license.
He did, he had a CDL.
CDL, exactly. He did have CDL. So I, I think we should really look to replace, you know, we, we'd have to find someone with a CDL or have additional members trained to have that CDL license. Kat, if you know anybody with a CDL, let us know.
Yeah. My hand up.
Just, just saying. Okay.
Okay, so on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two.
As amazes being submitted and open.
I used to drive the big plow trucks. Resolve, resolution number ten, resolve the Board of Trustees points Matthew Meeks to the position of beach manager, Cooper's Beach at salary of twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars effective May twenty-fourth, twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will say that Matt does a fantastic job managing our second most beautiful beach and he's hoping it's going to be the first most. I don't even know. He's been here many years, but he does a great job. He was in last week and going over all salaries and all the planning. He's a little upset because the board did approve some of the equipment upgrades last year with the excess revenue that we had in the budget. Purchased to replace some of the rental chairs and umbrellas. The umbrellas have arrived. Chairs, we're told now are back ordered. So, but he was happy about that. He said that the umbrellas are much more popular rental item than the chairs. So, good summary at Cooper's to share. Resolve number, resolution number eleven, resolve Board of Trustees approves following staff rates and rates of pay for the employees at Cooper's Beach effective May twenty-fourth. Okay, so we have lifeguard salaries. We have Patrick Matthews and Brandon Mendez at seventeen dollars and fifty cents an hour. We have Sean Godfrey, Charlie Nichols, Benjamin Ross, William Malone, Turner West, Emmett Wetter and Griffin Schwartz at eighteen dollars an hour. We have James Malone at eighteen fifty per hour. We have Ray Sweeney and Evelyn Purcell at twenty dollars per hour. We have David Q Nichols and Patrick Maloney at twenty-one dollars an hour, Michelle Crado at twenty-four dollars an hour, Mike Purcell at twenty-six dollars an hour and our head lifeguard David A. Nichols, who's been with us for thirty-five years, at twenty-seven dollars per hour. We have Riley Zorko at Cooper booth attendant at eighteen fifty, Lainy Strumsky at sixteen sixty, Amanda Manino sixteen fifty, Megan Sweeney seventeen dollars, Renata Barnett sixteen dollars and Allison Booth at sixteen dollars. So do we have a motion?
Motion.
Or second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twelve, the Board of Trustees approves the promotion of Edward West to Brownskeeper three in Parks Department at a salary of seventy-one thousand three hundred fifty-two dollars and ninety cents to lead the downtown crew effective June third, twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number thirteen, the Board of Trustees approves the lateral transfer of James Strong, laborer on the highway department to the parks department to replace Ed West on Brown Street effective June third, twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fourteen, the Board of Trustees appoints Brendan Rapp, position of highway laborer effective June eighth, twenty-two, with salary of forty-three thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents placing Jim Strong's transfer to parks. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifteen, the Board of Trustees appoints Jason Ambrose, position of parks laborer of downtown crew at a salary of forty-three thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents but June third, twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number sixteen, the Board of Trustees approves the stipend in the amount of five hundred dollars, which is pro rated ninety day site. Ninety day temp Jay Anderson, who is assuming additional duties as voter, voter republic village hall. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number seventeen, the Board of Trustees approved the Southampton Fire Department to post their annual awards standard at Nance Family Park on Saturday, June fourth, twenty-two, six P M to eleven P M. A tent will be set up by Friday, June third, twenty-two and moved by Sunday, June seventh, June fifth, twenty-two. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Yes.
I was fortunate enough to attend this function last year. And I would, it was the first time I've been to the fire department awards ceremony and it was so amazing. The event is just so wonderful to see all the people who contributed their time and their years of service to the fire department, getting up and getting their forty and fifty year recognition. Just, I just thought it was awesome. This year, unfortunately, I can't go. It's my grandson's first birthday and I'm going to be at his party, but I will be there in spirit. Mentioned all the fire department for that and then I wish it could be at their awards ceremony. Thank you. I think that's why it's fantastic. I get, I get winning. Fantastic. So.
Well, I must say, I'm, I'm going to miss that also because it's my mother's ninety-fifth birthday. So we're going to have that celebration. So let's celebrate, but yes, it is.
So on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eighteen, the Board of Trustees approves Southampton Village Ocean Rescue Lifeguard South Hampton High School Day at the beach at Cooper's Beach on Thursday, June twenty-third, twenty-two, one to three P M. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Thank you very much, Charlie. We have no further appointments tonight, so we'll move to comment from board members. We'll start with trustee Reston.
Evening, Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate Bob Briznick and the owner of South Cliffgate Drugs and he is in business in the village for fifty years. So he has a fifty year anniversary. And he's so involved with the community, Bob. He really runs the Fourth of July Parade. He's headed the T B O, veteran, and we're so lucky to have him in our, our village. And with that, let's remember to remember our veterans and those that have died for our country. This weekend is Memorial Day on Monday. The, the little walk down Job's Lane starts at ten forty-five and the ceremony begins at eleven A M on Monday. And I know the scouts are involved and other different groups are there. So it would be very, very nice to have a great turnout for our, those that are giving their lives for our country. A couple of things, updates about the, the charging stations are done operating. The striping was done. Everybody could see as you go by them now, absolutely complete with the proper signs and everything. So make sure if you are not charging your car, do not park in that spot. So that's just, that's a public warning. You will get tagged for that. Or if you are, and I keep this happening, didn't you pull up in one already? So once, once you're done, you, you only have a small amount of time to move your car. You can't let it sit there the whole day once it's charged. I'm very happy that the downtown crew is now complete. And I believe they're going to start this weekend, Charlie. When are they?
Yes.
Yeah, or, yeah. So you'll see a presence in the CPW over the weekends and as well as during the week to keep our village streets in the condition that we're keeping. And the big bellies, I'm happy to say, one thing is still on schedule. So we should start seeing those come in, in June sometime. So I just got confirmation that they are still on schedule. So I hope to see everyone Monday at the Memorial Day ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Reston. Trustee Brown?
I just want to update the information. Request to me. From the law office of Vincent Tumi. Our request is we need to get these additional avenues to determine if we can obtain the police exam itself expeditiously. And I'd like to go into record and while we set in a spirit to. That this was when to turn this meeting. So the council service. Dear Commissioner. Well, my office is the council to the village of Southampton for labor and. As you may be aware, the village of Southampton has a vacancy in its chief position. A vacancy.
Trustee, trustee, can you move the microphone a little closer? I, I'm not catching everything you're saying. I apologize. Just the microphone. Can you move the microphone a little closer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I start from the beginning?
I, I apologize, trustee.
No problem. I'll start from the beginning.
Good evening, everyone. A request has been made from the office of Vincent Tumi, our labor attorney, on behalf of Southampton Village. We are seeking additional avenues to determine if we can obtain the police chief exam results expeditiously. I'd like to read this letter that was sent on our behalf to Thomas Malito, personal officer of Suffolk County Civil Service. Dear Commissioner Malito, I hope you have been well. My office is the council to the village of Southampton for labor and employment matters. As you may be aware, the village of Southampton has a vacancy in its police chief position. Your agency primarily through Stan Pelk has been helpful to the village in securing an open competitive test for this position. The examination was given in March, twenty-twenty-two. In the past years, test results for examinations occurring in March were often released in May. In a recent conversation with Mr. Pelk, he indicated that due to COVID related backlogs over the last two years in scheduling and scoring test exams, the results might be sent to Suffolk County until sometime over the summer. Mr. Pelk indicated that his circumstance is entirely out of the county's control and we totally understand that. Stan did indicate, however, that upon receipt of the result from the state, it might be possible for the department to expedite the processing and certification of the results. Doing so would be extremely helpful and respectfully request your consideration of this matter, which is of great importance to the village. If you do wish to discuss this, I would be happy to do so. Thank you for your consideration, very truly, Vince Tumi and I assure myself and all the trustees agree to that and say thank you so very much. I'd like to give this to our village administrator for this document. And I want to, on the other hand, wish everyone a wonderful, pleasant and.
Safe. I would like to be, uh, like to be safe.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Uh, trustee McLaughlin.
Good evening, Mayor. Um, first off, congratulations to Eddie West, to the people who are coming in for hanging up our downtown crew. Much deserved and one woman do. Um. I, I do want to say happy birthday to all residents in this. My way is, yes. Unofficial kickoff time, but also it's a time of reflection because we do, should be ironing those. Took the rise for our freedom. So I obviously hope that we all can, as much as you want to enjoy our, our family and friends too. But on this time, in, in more somber way as well. Also, I'm very tired of working with this museum on plea and money. We said, so I've spent two thousand dollars for a year. I, I, I think I'm a fantastic job with the entrance team. They've done great working on the ground and working to improve the property and of course, a few of the mansion gets costly and of course, the requirements of our community. So I hope that in the coming years, those laundry lists of things can be accomplished. Right? Quickly. So with that, have a great weekend and we shall, see you in June.
Thank you very much, trustee McLaughlin. Trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, trustee Mayor. Like to add my voice to those monitoring, those who felt pending our freedoms, providing us with safety and security and wish you all a happy Memorial Day. I believe as a board, trustees and mayor, our fundamental job is to protect the safety and security of all of our residents. We do a lot of things here. These are about the lake and about our buildings and about our infrastructure, our streets. Really got a focus on making sure that everybody listens on Anthony Miller to secure and safe here. And I spoke earlier about the capital equipment, the police and fire trucks that the fire department indicated that they don't want us to do their jobs. And I want to thank the board for approving the capital budget. We depend on our police force, professionals or police force are emergency ambulance services are part of our department, volunteers and the professionals work in all those departments to keep us safe. And they need the right equipment to do the jobs to do that. And it's our, it's our responsibility to provide that equipment for them. It's not cheap. We've approved the purchase of an ambulance this past year that was aiming at three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Fire police, actually approved tonight are close to three hundred thousand dollars a piece. Coming up in the future, we're going to need some big fire trucks. Those are over a million dollars. They're not getting bells and whistles and I hold play it. This is what this equipment costs. And it's expensive. We have the right to demand that those who work in, in our departments, in the police and fire and ambulance departments, spend the money they are allocated to get the maximum efficiency. By the same token, they have the right to look to us to provide them with the equipment they need to do their job. We are currently, if you look at the budget, once it's published, you'll see that several big expenditures for the fire department hold pending negotiations with Southampton Fire District and are ongoing to determine the amount of contribution the district pays to the village to pay for our jointly shared fire protection. The village provides fire, fire protection to the greater Southampton district. And I hope that the district will understand and make it a priority to contribute their fair share to the capital equipment costs that we see coming up in the future to maintain the high standards for our Southampton Village Fire Department. I'd like to conclude by thanking the taxpayers who of course, fund and pay for us being able to do this. I'd like to thank the board for putting this all together and supporting the capital budget. And I'd like to thank the men and women of the fire E M P and police departments for all they do to keep us secure and safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Stevenson. I'll conclude by first and foremost, thanking and recognizing every member of our parks department and particularly, particular supervisor Steve Phillips. But you've got a lot of great, great people such as. Um, but, uh, you've got a lot of great, uh, great people such as, uh, Phil Bang, City West. Basically, if you look around the downtown right now, uh, in my opinion, it looks, uh, as good or better than ever before. Uh, we're using, uh, new mulch around our trees. Uh, we're starting to power wash our streets regularly, uh, organically without chemicals, uh, but just with a regular power wash. Uh, you've got obviously flowers planted, uh, courtesy of the Children's Improvement Society. Uh, and, uh, and I think we've been getting a lot of compliments as well lately. Uh, and this is, uh, thanks in large part, uh, to our parks department who came, uh, came out this year, uh, as they do every year, but this year in particular, uh, stepped up. I think our village is in great shape. Again, we're getting a lot of great compliments and we just encourage everyone, they walk around, uh, they can see how beautiful it looks. Uh, they can thank our parks department as well. That's number one. Uh, secondly, I'll, I'd like to echo, uh, trust in the block on's comment, congratulating, uh, Ed West, uh, for his, uh, promotion. Uh, he'll be, uh, leading the downtown crew. Uh, this, uh, board, uh, has actually been working on this for quite some time. Uh, we had, uh, some issues with civil service, but we fought very hard. Uh, we thought that Ed really deserved a promotion and, uh, now with the downtown group, uh, there was a great opportunity to do so. Uh, so we are, uh, very happy to do this, uh, and wanted to thank our entire board, uh, for ratifying that, uh, that promotion. Very happy for, uh, uh, Ed, uh, Ed West, as trustee McLaughlin said, long overdue, absolutely. And we're happy that this board was able to get that done. Um, in addition, uh, just wanted to, uh, conclude, uh, by, uh, by again, uh, wishing everyone a happy Memorial Day weekend. Hope you can enjoy the time with your friends and family, be safe. And, uh, we look forward to the Memorial Day, uh, ceremony where we, uh, honor and recognize, recognize our veterans, uh, who gave the ultimate sacrifice to our country and community. Uh, for me, this is one of the most, and that the most important days out of the year, uh, where we recognize those who have fallen to sacrifice themselves, uh, for our freedom that we get to enjoy, uh, every single day. Uh, so with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adjourn to executive session, uh, for the purpose of discussing legal and personnel, uh, and contractual matters. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. We have returned from executive session. The time is ten, eleven P M., Tuesday, May twenty-fourth. Let the record show that no action was taken in executive session. And I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.